Hello Nancy.
Hello, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good. Hi Judy.
I see Judy's here, gonna run and go grab something real fast, I'll be back.
How are you? How's your niece?
She's doing great, she's back at work.
Oh good, that's good to hear.
Fortunately, her recovery went well.
Very good.
I was just grateful that I could fly out there to see her. She's only seven years younger than me, she's more like a younger sister than a niece.
Yeah, I gotcha.
Yeah. Don't get to see her enough, and that was terrible, then when I realized it'd been almost six years since I'd been out there.
Oh goodness.
To see her and my sister and my other niece, so. So it was nice, I got to spend five days there. And it was good. How's things in the city? Are you guys like back in the office, or?
Uh, we're currently at seventy-five percent in the office since we are at blue level.
Okay.
So I'm working at home this week and I'll be in the office next week. So slowly getting there.
Do you prefer, um, being at, is it harder being at home, especially for what you do to try and get everybody organized?
You know, when it first started, it wasn't that bad, but now it's, yeah, we're just getting so much busy, it's easier to be in the office, if we're all in the office. It takes a lot more time to send emails and rather than going and walking into someone's offices and saying, hey, you know, what about this? So it just takes time. And then there's things you always forget at the office that you need when you're at home, so. But you know what? I think for, for the past year, we've all adapted and been as flexible as we possibly can, so.
Yeah. So are we just going over, I mean, I actually was able to read the whole thing. Going up, when I saw two hundred and twelve pages, I thought, oh wait, and you know what, but then that was mostly all those addendums, you know, the data stuff, so that was fine.
It's, it's funny Nancy, because when I saw that, um, I've been really busy with work and I emailed Wade and I said, uh, that's a lot of material to digest.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be our working document for almost a year while we work on.
Okay.
Team, so.
Because I'm making any decisions today.
We're talking, yeah. Yeah, because I was just like, oh no, I've got to lead this meeting for two hundred and twelve pages of stuff. I just don't know if I can do that or not. Unless I stay up twenty-four hours or something, and then I would be, oh, and here's, here's, we're just talking about what you told me Wade, um, about, no, we don't have to. We're talking, we're just talking.
Yeah, we're just talking. Yeah, this will be our, our document for the next year as we work through specifics that we reference and, and go from.
And that's just great to hear.
How does staff generally, maybe this is a question for later, generally feel about the recommendations?
I, um, yeah, we think there's a lot of really good valid suggestions there. You know, we, we really tried to look at what, you know, Colorado communities are doing and, you know, nationwide trends and you know, there's, there's some very difficult, uh, things in there that.
Yeah, I read through some of that.
Gonna take a lot of talking.
I got caught outside in that storm this afternoon, holy smokes.
So weird.
I came out of Home Depot and I thought that, I mean, I bought two orchids there and I had to hold on to them to keep them from blowing out of the freaking cart. They were like falling sideways out of the cart and then like, yeah. When I went in, it was all nice, I come out and this gigantic windstorm and rain everywhere and, oh yeah, 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 yeah.
It's snowing at my house.
It was a little while ago, it stopped. Yeah, and it's trash night, and so I'm just like.
At my house?
What's it doing at your house?
It's sunny, sunny and warm.
Well, where are you Dugan?
Well, uh, I'd rather not say.
Yeah.
Bottom three, right outside my window, I'm joking.
I'm guessing you're not in Inglewood, Colorado right now.
No, I'm not, but I'm not that far away either.
It's always sunny on that side of town, isn't it Dugan?
Not really, no. You just have to read the next door postings and go, really? You found a spider in your dining room? Kill it.
I'll tell you what. Next door can be something else sometimes.
We are being recorded, just so you know.
Well, I'm gonna go, we're wrong, but yeah.
No, I know, I'm just, it's just a reminder.
Yeah, thank you though, that's, that's a good reminder. It can be very useful at times when you've like lost your dog or something, but, uh, and also for, you know, my car was stolen and that sort of thing to kind of keep appraised of what's going on in the neighborhoods, but wow, some of those comments can go on for, and some of them are mean.
Fireworks and gunshots are, are the ones I like. That was fireworks, no, it was gunshots, no, it was fireworks.
Yeah, I know. How are we doing Nancy with numbers of people? I mean, it's not time yet, we've got two more minutes before it's seven o'clock, so we're not.
I do know Kate Fuller will not be here tonight. She's under the weather.
Uh-oh, it looks like my computer is unplugged and I don't want it to die on me. I'm sorry, you said Kate Fuller, is that right? Is under the weather?
Yes, she's under the weather.
Right there, so there you go.
Okay. And here comes Noel. The only one we're missing is Diane, so you do have a quorum. And I'm showing it's just now seven o'clock.
Right, okay, we'll wait a minute or so.
Okay.
We're gonna read through all two hundred and twelve pages today, right? Of the.
Yes, yes.
Perfect, okay.
That's what Wade's gonna do, he's gonna read us all that.
And there will be a test.
Okay, oh, um, I've actually, I gotta, I gotta go, real quick. There's a lot of information.
Yes, there, it is a lot of information. Shall we go ahead and get started Nancy?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, I'm calling the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, April sixth to order. And Nancy, will you call the role?
Ms. Townley?
We see you.
Sorry, couldn't get to my unmute here.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Donaldson?
Here.
Mr. Haggerty?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Fuller is absent this evening, Ms. Lipowski?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
And Chair Austin?
Here.
All right. We have a quorum established, that's fantastic. Uh, we now need to approve the minutes from March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. Is there any discussion? Well, first of all, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, great. I believe that was Colin and Kate, my screen's a little small, so I can't really see, but I'm guessing by voices. All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's, uh, let's vote on the minutes from March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, Ms. Townley?
Yes.
Ms. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Haggerty?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Lipowski?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
And Chair Austin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Nancy, do we have any members from the public? Sorry, we do not.
All right. Okay, since that's, since we have no members from the public, we will go on to the, I'm sure you, very well studied notes taken, two hundred and twelve pages uh, of the Unified Development Code Assessment, and I'll turn it over to Wade.
Thank you Chair Austin, hello everybody. So as you all remember, this project was kicked off at the end of July last summer when you had the joint, uh, work session, study session with City Council to, uh, set expectations and have an initial conversation about the existing Unified Development Code or Title sixteen as it's often called. And, uh, this document is the final product, um, of the almost five or six month process that, uh, staff went through with the assistance of Logan Simpson. Jennifer Gardner is also online tonight, um, to help answer any questions you might have from Logan Simpson as well. But what I thought, um, we would do tonight is simply, uh, present this document, have some conversation around it. Uh, I want to spend a little bit of time talking about the next steps and the role that the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to play as we move forward with the full rewrite of the Unified Development Code. Um, I provided you with a, uh, a staff report that, that outlines, you know, the steps that we went through and the objectives of the process. I won't read through all of those again, uh, to you, but essentially, um, as you know, our Unified Development Code was last comprehensively rewritten in two thousand and four. Inglewood has had a lot of change, uh, there's been a lot of new planning documents adopted by City Council, and so the big effort here is to, uh, develop a Unified Development Code that is modern, uh, easier to use, um, addresses a lot of the existing things that, you know, may not be working in the current code. Uh, we, we start, we started this process by asking everybody what works in the code, what doesn't work in the code, what might be missing from the code. So with that sort of, uh, those parameters set, um, the project was kicked off and we, um, had a, a very robust, um, public outreach and engagement campaign, uh, that lasted the entire six months, so there were certain uh, steps that we conducted, you know, the first phase was sort of, you know, generally listening to the community to find out what was working, what was on their minds, things like that. Um, as we wrapped up that first phase, there were five main topics that really rose to the top uh, that people were wanting to dive a little deeper into and focus more on. Uh, that's explained in the final assessment report, but those five high priority areas include residential dimensional and design standards. We've all heard a lot about bulk plane, a lot coverage, height, uh, especially in the uh, R two B, you know, the transitional residential neighborhoods that are experiencing a lot of redevelopment right now. The next, uh, really, uh, high priority topic that ties into that is neighborhood character. Are there codes and regulations we could develop that protects the neighborhood characters a little bit more? And we looked into, you know, does that mean preservation overlays, does it talk about materials of buildings? You know, what does that really mean? Um, the third, uh, major topic is housing attainability. That's an ever-growing, uh, topic amongst all, uh, city boards, commissions, city council, and so forth as to how we can encourage more attainability in our housing stock that's affordable. The fourth high priority topic relates to parking and walkability. Uh, we've had a lot of conversations through this process about, you know, areas of the city that are overparked versus areas of the city that are underparked. And how does that play with the, the walkability concept, um, for pedestrian safety? Uh, pedestrian enhancements, how can we get people, uh, encouraged to do more walking? Yet, you know, safety becomes an issue with, with cars, and so how, those two sort of play off one another. Do we decrease parking in favor of more walkable areas in certain areas of town, but not in others, so there's, there's some things in, uh, the final assessment that are options for us to look at, for us to consider as we move forward. Finally, the fifth high priority topic, uh, was sustainability and green infrastructure. Um, there's, uh, becoming a, a larger push, um, in the city to, uh, develop green infrastructure to help with stormwater runoff, uh, increased landscaping, uh, perimeters or landscaping requirements to help catch some other runoff. Uh, green infrastructure, solar, uh, is becoming a bigger and big topic that our code uh, currently doesn't, uh, have a lot of, of areas or, or regulations, uh, related to solar, uh, to encourage solar. So those five topics are spelled out in more detail throughout the, uh, final assessment plan. And throughout the document, especially, um, these five areas, uh, we have come up with uh, quite a list of suggestions or options to consider as we move forward with the rewrite. Um, we did that for the five high priority topics, but we also, um, have done that and provided suggestions for update on a chapter by chapter basis of the Unified Development Codes, so you can, you can look through this document and go to chapter, um, six, which is a, a pretty major chapter, uh, in the UDC relating to development standards, that's where all the bulk plane requirements are, the height, the lot coverage. So you can see in there, uh, there's sections where, you know, we talk about what kind of options might we look at. So there are also several appendix, uh, to this document as well as one supplemental document. Uh, the appendix really goes into detail about each event we held, uh, for public outreach, you know, what comments we recorded, uh, et cetera and so forth. And we also, um, provide a summary of all the polling questions we did, we had five quick polls, if you remember those. Uh, where residents in the community could take these polls and, and record their, their thoughts, so the results are all there for those. And then we have, uh, all of our steering committee meeting notes. Uh, we had five steering committee meetings, uh, under this initial phase of the project. Uh, that steering committee was essentially a sounding board for, for us on the project team to, to really, uh, throw ideas out there, uh, get ideas and feedback as to how those might work in Inglewood, what might not work, so, uh, we utilized that group uh, of residents to really, uh, listen to the ideas as well as uh, spread the word within their neighborhoods as to, you know, the outreach events that were coming up. Try to reach as many members of the community as, as we could.
Wade, could I just interrupt for a moment, since we were talking a little bit offline before the meeting started, and I'm not certain everyone was, was online at that time. This is a document, um, that we're gonna be working from for an entire year. And we're talking tonight, we're not
Correct.
making decisions, I just want to make sure that the commissioners understand that, um, what, what our purpose is tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah, to, to to go a little further with that thought, um, I, I would like for the Planning and Zoning Commission to really consider this document as the blueprint, as the guide, um, to use as we are moving forward with the rewrite. This is a document that doesn't need any kind of formal recommendation. City Council has reviewed this document, um, at, uh, one of their, uh, March meetings. And so they are aware of the document and the recommendations or suggestions, uh, that are in it. So, having said that, I want to, uh, before turning it over to you all, spend a little bit of time talking about the next steps. We do have an RFP, Request for Proposal, uh, currently out for the rewrite process assistance with the city. That RFP, the responses are due May sixth, I believe. And then we will, uh, go through the process of um, vetting the responses and, uh, because of the size of this next phase, we will have to get authorization and approval from City Council, uh, to move on with the selected consulting firm for the rewrite. And how this plays into the Planning and Zoning Commission is that you all are going to be the primary members of the steering committee for the rewrite process. Meaning, um, we will meet twice a month at our regular meeting time. And if we have any other land development applications, we will take care of that first. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission proper, you all, uh, will adjourn. And reconvene in a study session group. And we will talk through chapter by chapter. All of these recommended, recommended, suggested. Options and we will get specific as to what code section. You know, ties into other code sections, if we change one section, does that affect another? So I'm going to use the topic of attainable housing. There are several methods that we can use. To increase attainable housing in Anglewood. One of the suggestions in this document is that we increase the usage or expand the usage of accessory dwelling units. Most of you do know the lengthy painful time we had getting the ordinance passed. For ADUs that we currently have. But that is one very effective method that can be looked at further to. Spur attainable housing, do we allow it in more zoning districts? Do we increase the size? Do we allow accessory dwelling units to be attached to the main residential structure instead of it being a separate standalone? Structure. You know, another way to. Spur attainable housing is to write in. Code language that requires X percentage of new units that is being developed be. Income regulated for a certain level of income. That the residents will have. Whether that be a 10% of your units must be if you know. Affordable based on this criteria, then that's something we can write in. In the code. Another option is increasing the definition. Or revising the definition of a household, right now only two unrelated persons. Can live in a in a household. And that includes your your kids or you know, anything like that, but. There are jurisdictions around Anglewood that allow up to five unrelated persons to live in a structure. Without it being any violation, so. There are many ways we can achieve. The goal of more attainable housing. But we're what we're all going to have to do is really dig in and find. What works best in Anglewood, maybe it's a combination of any of those, maybe. Couple of those just simply don't work in Anglewood. So we're going to have to talk through all of that. So as you. Read through and and work through this document, I encourage you to make notes, highlights. And as as Chair Austin said, we will be using this document heavily as we go forward. Now, you all being the part of the steering committee. City council is also going to appoint a certain number of. Steering committee members of their choosing. We are recommending five. Additional steering committee members of their choosing. However, that is up to them. But what you all need to know is that there is a. Application that will be released here in the next couple of days. Seeking volunteers to sit on the steering committee with you all to talk through. All of these issues. Now you all will be a part of the interview process, you all will have a chance to see the RFPs that. Are coming through the city, so you all will have a chance to weigh in on. The the consultants proposals as we as we get them. We specifically wanted to. Form the steering committee. Before we went through the selection process, so you all. Had a better understanding of what the consultants are asking and proposing for for this process. And. That final recommendation then. Will then be carried through to city council of the steering committee as to who to select as the final consultant to work with us on the rewrite. If that all makes sense, hopefully, so. There's nine planning and zoning commission members, I think. And then there could be up to five additional steering committee members that are selected and appointed by city council. For only this rewrite process. They do not become members of the planning and zoning commission. They are strictly members of the steering committee for this specific project.
I did see a hand up from Carl at one point.
Sure. And Judy has her hand up.
Great, thank you, okay, Carl.
I was wondering, depending on the subject, whatever the subject is. Will there be any data from? What other cities do on what they do like? ADUs, is there any information on what other cities do with ADUs or?
Most definitely.
Whatever the subject is.
Most definitely, yes, you will, you all will be getting. A lot of data. Lot of papers or electronic in this case.
That that kind of gives us a baseline or average or whatever you might call it, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay Judy, and then I see Diane and Kate, so Judy.
Has his up as well.
Okay.
Two clarifying questions, one, you said, so the interviewing that you were referring to, that's of the. Companies that are proposing, not in the interviews for the citizens that will be joining us.
That is for the consulting firms, yes.
Okay, and then, so the council is going to appoint the citizens prior to us. Betting the these companies, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. When is the application process done for a spot?
The interviews for the. Other steering committee members are scheduled for May tenth.
Okay.
So. I'm not recalling the. Application close date. Nancy and I haven't really finalized that, I don't think. But yeah, it'll be within the next couple of weeks, really.
The the next one I saw was Diane, but Nancy, correct me if I'm wrong.
Colin was up.
No, I. I saw, see, I don't see Colin's hand, sorry, I see Kate and then Diane.
Okay, I see Colin's hand up too, but. Okay. Colin, you want to?
Sure, I'll I'll go real quick. So the selection, will we? Obviously, we'll receive the proposals that the consultants are providing. Are we all together, each individually? Going to be ranking them and reviewing that, are we only going to be? Ranking, reviewing the ones that the city has determined will go on to the interview phase, or we just do interviews, are we going to do this all as one group and come to one selection, or how will that process?
It it's right now, it's envisioned as we will all be one group. The plan is right now, we will interview each firm that is. Submitting. You know, we might have to rethink that if we get 20 firms submitting, you know, I don't, we'll just have to. Play that by ear, depending on how many we we receive, but. The the idea right now is yes, we will look at each one of the firms collectively. Make that recommendation to city council. For them to move forward with the contract.
Yeah, I think, thanks, I think that helps clarify, it's that it could get a little dicey, like I said, if we get 20, maybe we'll get. Two or three.
Right.
Yeah, I know, it's a specialized. Group of people that are.
Right.
Are. Skilled to do that, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, Diane.
Hi, I have two questions, one pertains a bit to Colin's question, so. We, the steering committee, the planning and zoning commission, plus the up to five additional individuals will interview. The consultants and will. Provide individual rankings that will then, I assume, be collated to council and then does the council. Interview them also, or are they just going to base it on the on the recommendations?
Right, thank you, so we will have a. List of interview questions prepared beforehand for everybody. And we will have a ranking system for everybody to use, so. They will rank each firm based on completeness of response, for example. And there'll be a point system defined by to each category that we will then use to total. And and. You know, usually. There tends to be one or two that rise to the top, you know, that may or may not happen again in this this situation. But no, to your second question, city council will then not, they will not interview them again. That is what our our task, one of our first tasks will be to 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 vet the firms. And make that recommendation as to who to. To go with.
And then. And then my second question is a little bit further down in the process. So when we are. Analyzing and digging into the language and, you know, reviewing these recommendations and assessments. In this document relative to the new wording, how? How are decisions made on things, you know, like I, you know, I noticed in the document in some of the surveys, it was like a forty five fifty five split of. This or that, and you know, how are? How is it going to be decided, is it going to be each little element gets voted on, or? I just was hoping to hear a little more about that process.
Yeah, and that's one thing we'll have to to talk with the the firms that come through. You know, there's, there's the possibility that we break this up into sections. We may take. Several sections at once and then, you know. Sort of clear the deck and then go on to another section or topic. You know, I think topics out of those five high priority areas are are probably going to have to be talked about. Sort of separately to try to land on what we want to do. Yeah, there's no clear answer to that other than, you know, hopefully, we reached a majority of the members and they want to proceed a certain way. And then we would come up with the recommendation based on the majority of the steering committee. And you know, it's going to be important that we're. We're as clear as we can, almost providing findings of fact, if you will. For all of our decisions. So that when we go and present. This recommendation to city council, we can. Be clear as to, you know. Seven members of the steering committee thought this was the best route and here's why, but then these five thought. You know, this was a better option and why. So, yeah, we're just going to have to be really clear and very detailed as we can. As we move forward, but that that's going to be a good question for. For the interview process as to how. You know, the consulting firm sees handling this amount of information and this volume of a document. And how we can. You know, work through it as as best we can without just totally getting wrapped around the wheel. Axel on some of this stuff.
Thank you.
I see Kate.
Yep.
Thanks, Wade, I was wondering in the RFA or. I guess within the RFA, is there any? Request for like a economic impact analysis or health analysis of? The different recommendations for changes within the code. Mainly because we have community input, we have, you know, our desire for how we want things to look. But those also have economic implications as well, like. If we went off of one of the recommendations and from the community and said, okay, all houses should only be one story. That may be okay, design wise, but that could make a huge economic impact. So is there any room for that in the RFA? Or from these consultants?
There is not specifically anything in there right now, but we do have an opportunity when we. We do the interviews, we can, if we want to do some of that. We can make it known and we can also work that into any kind of scope of work that the final selected firm. Would have, so if there's a specific topic like that example, you know, keeping all the houses one story. You know, in the scope of work, we can add that, you know, please perform an economic. Viability study. On that concept. Right now, the. There are. Hints in the RFP about. Some modeling assistance in with modeling. Because we've come into this. Bulk plane situation, I think, with a little bit of a disadvantage, because really what does? Twelve fifteen and seventeen feet mean, what does it look like in a house? You know, Brooke did some, Brooke Bell. In our office did some really great work on some graphics when we were going through this. But I don't think we really understand. I don't want to speak for everybody, I don't even really understand, I'll say that. You know, what? What is the material difference between those numbers in with regard to a a house, you know, new construction? So I think if we can model some of that and really understand. Some of that, I think will be very beneficial, so there is that in the RFP. Right now. So. You know, we still have the a room to ask within the scope of work specific for certain specific things, yes.
Thank you.
So Colin, your hand is still up, are you wanting to ask another question?
If I could, please, can we get a copy of the RFP so we know what is being requested?
Yep, absolutely.
And I guess last question. I don't recall ever having to do this before that we would select, is there a reason why council would be or? Planning zoning commissions selecting as opposed to the city selecting the best for this particular project? Besides the impact that it has on us, I guess, but.
Yep, planning and zoning is just recommending to city council.
Okay.
So they will make the final decision based on our betting with this board and and the five extra.
And what, how will you? Your influence be in that, will you be a part of that steering committee as well?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I I will be a part of it as well.
Thank you.
Nancy, is there, are there any other hands up?
There are not, okay.
Wade, would you like to continue?
Yeah, I would just like to open it up to if there's any specific areas. That you all have questions on tonight. Anything with regard to sort of the the flow of the document and some of the suggestions. That maybe Jen can weigh in on or. You know, if if we're good to go. You know, as I said, we will, we will visit this document frequently. You know, I think there's been several updates throughout this whole process with you all, so I think. You, you know, have seen a lot of what's in there already. But we're we're happy to. Take your lead, if you have questions, we're happy to. Answer and talk through them, or we're. We're also happy to say. you know, we'll see you probably in May and June to, to really start getting into the details here.
Could you review the dates again, Wade?
So the, the RFPs are due May sixth.
Okay.
City council is interviewing the five additional steering committee members on May tenth. We will take the remainder of May. And Nancy, I'm sorry, I don't know that I have the dates. There's a, a range of dates for the interviews. Is that the end of May?
I believe it's the week of the seventeenth, but don't quote me on it. I'm going to send everyone the RFP, so you'll have it here shortly.
Yeah, those dates are in there.
Okay, so our, our things will, will, will be doing interviews on the week of the seventeenth, you think, right, Nancy?
Sorry, that's my best recollection, but without looking at the document.
Right, it'll be in there, okay.
It will be, and I'm pulling that up to send to you all. And I do see Judy's and Meg's hand when Wade.
And then we, if I could just real quick, then we will, we hope to have a, a firm selected and approved in June, probably the second meeting in June of city council.
Okay, so just, just to dig in a little bit more on these, these interviews. Do you, well, of course, we don't know how many people are going, or how many firms are going to submit, so we really don't have a total picture of that. But do you envision that perhaps planning and zoning will need to meet more than their normal schedule to accomplish those interviews?
That is a possibility. It's the possibility.
Okay.
But I, I just don't, I don't know for sure at this point.
Well, and, and I have had the same experience. There's usually, I just went through the, a similar, well, not similar, but another RFP whole thing for, for a, a foundation and who would be their investment advisor. And you're right about out, out of the seven companies that submitted, two were the hands-down favorites. So generally, that seems like that does happen, so. Okay, Judy?
Judy, if you don't mind, I did find the document, and so my dates are wrong. So the committee would review the RFP the week of May, or the dates of May thirteenth and fourteenth. So you all would review, would review all those proposals that come in. Then consultant interviews are scheduled for May twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh. So just depending, as Wade said, how many we get and how many interviews. So I will get this sent off to you, and thank you, Judy.
Okay, great. Thank, thank you, Nancy. Judy?
This is a process question, I, and you may have partially answered it. And I'm wondering if possibly Logan Simpson can be a part of this, but the sort of the, I don't know how to, there has to be a rational approach to this. And I'm having, I, I did read through all the recommendations, and like you said earlier, Wade, there are some that are very, very complicated. And I would hope that there's some tried and true methods of, you know, early wins, get the low-hanging fruit, get those solidified, but, but those can also change once you get to those overarching things, or do you, do you attack the big, complex conversations first because of their possible effect, like Kate said, in terms of economic impact, or just not even really something that should be considered in Englewood, I mean. And I can't think of anything exactly, but there were a couple of things that I'm like, you know, this, I know, I know that feels like it's something we should want to do, but I, it just doesn't really seem to fit in the size city we are, the financial ability we have, the type of developers that come into our city. So I, I don't know how, I don't know how we start this so that the process flows the most efficiently. And, and I don't know if that's something the consultants are going to give us a recommendation about, if that's a question we can ask in the interview. Because, boy, if, if that's, if we don't start right, it's just going to be a year of misery. So.
Right.
I, I just, I, I just want to have a feel for whose responsibility, who do we hand that off to about making sure we start this properly?
Well, I'm certainly hoping that you'll keep that question, no matter what Wade's answer is, for the consultants, because that's an important question. So, go ahead, Wade.
Yeah, that, that's a very important question. And, and yes, it, it will all go back to the project managers for this, which, which will be me. And then Jen, if Logan Simpson is selected for the next phase, they will, consultants will have that process or should have that process spelled out pretty clearly in their responses as to how they suggest moving forward.
Well, if they've done it before, they better have it figured out by now.
Right, exactly. You know, there are things in the code, I'm going to use telecommunications as one. Our current telecommunications chapter in the UDC, my opinion, is a mess. It's so complicated, nobody can understand it. And that's something that sort of stands alone. It can be done and done with. So there are, as you say, I think, easy wins. And, and I personally think this is going to have to be split out into those easy wins. And, and just because once we start getting into those heavier, complicated topics, we're going to lose everything else. It's going to go to the back burner and, and that's not necessarily where it should go, but if it's done, it's done, we can move on. I think that's the best approach. But I don't know, Jen, is there anything else you want to add to that, or?
Well, I think, while Jen's unmuting, it's important, I think, for all of us to experience some progress. So if we're not, don't feel like we're stuck, so.
Sure.
Yeah, without giving out our trade secrets before you actually review our proposal, we, we definitely skin the cap many different ways, so to speak, but we, our whole team breaks out the code. We don't write it all in one chunk, so we definitely, and we have many different, not many, but we have several writers, several different people that will be writing different sections. So what we can do, and what we often do, is something like Wade's telecommunications example, we might have one person kind of writing some of those low-hanging fruit, fruit sections in the background, while other people are working on the heavier topics in the foreground, and then we blend it all together. And we have adopted codes in sections before, where you can adopt kind of an overall reorganization, separate from kind of the meteor design guidelines topics, or adopt it all at once. So there's, there's many, like I said, there's many ways around that, and you should get that very well spelled out in your, in your proposals from your consultants. I know we spell out our process very clearly, so.
Meg, I think you were next.
Thanks. I had two quick questions, I guess. So the first one, is there, is it maybe in the RFP too? So sorry if it is. Is there a target date for completion of this whole process at this point?
We're hopeful for twelve months in the process. That, that's probably very optimistic. But the, the goal right now is twelve months. It, it just depends on, you know, there, there will be plenty of other public input. There'll be plenty of other opportunities for the community to weigh in on, on these topics. You know, if we come up against a topic such as attainable housing or parking, that's, you know, split, you know, forty-five, fifty-five, you know, that may be something that warrants additional study and public hearing that, or not public hearing, but public input that might take another month or two, and so it, it could, just depending on, you know, thoughts of, of the steering committee, and we're also going to be checking in with city council very frequently, just because of the volume of information and, and technical aspects of the project that they may insist and want additional outreach on a certain topic to, to try to reach more people and try to help inform the decision as well. So, anyway, that's a long answer to, hopefully, twelve months.
That's fair. Well, that's a good segue into my other question, because that was about community input. So it sounds like there will be more opportunities for that. But looking at the results in this report, it looks like there was varied responses depending on the topic. Did you feel like you had good community input through this, or are you looking for more?
I think, my opinion is, we, we had very good public input. We've, we tried to reach everybody. You know, some events did not work. Some worked very well. You know, it was trial and error through the COVID lockdown, and, you know, we could only do things virtually, essentially. But we do feel we, we did get a good response from our efforts. But yes, in no means does this document mean that the conversation is over. We fully expect to, to have a lot more community conversations going on as we write specifics.
Great, thanks. I'm glad to hear that you felt like you had good participation, though. That's good.
Yeah.
Colin, I see your hand up.
And I was just flipping through the RFP to see if it was in there, but is there an opportunity to be able to shortlist before the interviews? I mean, I think, like you said, you know, typically a couple rise to the top, and I'd love to not interview seven or eight, and.
Right. It, it's very possible. I, I mean, we, we, depending on how many we get, yes, it's very possible.
Okay, as long as it's a possibility, thank you.
You know, I'll be frank, that with this process for the assessment, we had a few that were just not going to work. And so we very well could have several responses received, and, you know, it's just not going to work. We have a, we have a budget amount. Somebody comes in way over budget, you know, that pretty much cuts them out of the process right from the beginning, so. Just, yeah.
As we have that opportunity, that, that's great. I just wanted to make sure that, that was a potential, thank you.
Wade, I have a question. Of course, another thing that can really slow us down in this full process is if we have to take up things with the city center redevelopment and things like that. How do you see all of those things coming forward? Because they'll be coming before us too in the next twelve months.
That's very true. Yeah, and, and city council is very forthright in saying that their plates are very full. Their plate's very full with a lot of different things. There's a lot of different initiatives going on in the city. So with regard to the city center rezoning and everything, that's tracked ahead of, of this rewrite process. That, however, can be relooked at if we feel that we missed something in the city center rezoning process. If we've gotten through the, you know, everything, and, you know, a developer comes in and says, oh, I want to do this, and, you know, we might think it's something we should consider and add to the code during the rewrite. So it has tracked before this free write process, but we can use the rewrite process as another opportunity to get things correct if we need to.
So that process, when push comes to shove, we'll have to, we'll take priority over this rewrite, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, right now it is, yes.
Okay, because I mean, I noticed that the, you know, Office Depot is closing. Just thought that's, that whole activity, so, okay, thank you. Any other questions for Wade?
Oh, Carl has his hand up.
Oh, Carl, I'm sorry.
I can't find the electronic hand raising, so I, I just do.
That's okay, all right.
For each, each meeting that we have, will there be a fixed amount of information that we go over at that particular meeting? And will we have the information like a few days beforehand to be able to research it?
So a lot like what John Voberl did, he will have a bunch of information prepared, and we will get as far in, in the night as, as you all want to go. So you'll have, you'll likely have a whole bunch more information than what we'll talk about in the night that we meet. And then we'll just gradually build on the conversations from meeting to meeting until we get through things. With regard to, you know, having the information beforehand, there's not going to be any thing that's done differently than what we do now. And I think packets go out to you all Thursday, Friday timeframe. So it could be a quick turnaround, but you know, you all can always tell me and, and the consultant, we need more time to digest this, and you know, there might be smaller bits that we go to instead and talk about that night to get out of the way if we, if we need more time to think about a heavier topic like bulk plane. I imagine, you know, some of those things are going to be multiple meetings and many hours spent.
This process has been long delayed, so will there be a set time for, to redo the whole process over again, five years, whatever?
This, how do I answer? Unified development codes generally aren't updated frequently because of the amount of time and effort and dollars that a community goes through to get, get the document done correctly the first time. There will always be opportunity for certain amendments to be made. Just like we made amendments with the ADU ordinance and the short-term rental ordinance. If something becomes an issue in the community, or, you know, something that we're directed to look at, we'll always look at things as we're directed to look at them. But a comprehensive, you know, four hundred-page document, rewrite, that doesn't happen very often for various reasons.
So we better get it right.
Try.
Okay.
I don't see any other hands.
Wade, you're very familiar with the document, more familiar than I think we are. Is there a particular place in your mind that you think that we should first start reading and taking notes on, or should we wait until after some of these dates have gone by in May?
I, I, I think you probably should start looking at the five high priority areas.
Okay.
Because those are going to be the areas where we're going to spend a lot of time. There are going to be a lot of community input on those five areas, a lot of different directions we can go in, in those areas. The document does provide snippets of the Englewood Forward Comprehensive Plan, so you can see where the suggestions are tying back to the comprehensive plan. I would also take, you know, I would also take, you know, keep in the back of your mind the Healthy Corridor Study. And, you know, maybe start looking at what goals those documents have mentioned as a priority and and sort of placing them in maybe a chapter. And, you know, highlighting where you want to talk about different goals and objectives. But I'd focus really on those five high priority topics, which is chapter four of the assessment report.
Any other questions for Wade?
Well, I look forward to it. We're gonna spend a lot of time together.
Sounds like it. Okay, thank you very much. And Jennifer, do you have anything to add?
No, other than thank you so far for for all of your input on on this particular part of the process. This has been really fun and I hope we get the opportunity to continue working with you.
You have a strange idea of fun, but that's just.
It's a code thing. We all, we all have a strange idea of fun.
It's like in your veins or something. Great, okay. All right, so no other hands up. We'll move to staff voice.
So our review of the capital improvement projects has been delayed by a a meeting. We won't start looking at them at the next meeting. It'll be the May 4th, I believe, is the date.
We do that in in this one year. That's right.
So I'm gonna have to rely on Nancy again. I don't know that we have anything on our next meeting.
Currently, we do not.
Okay, so that's something to keep in mind. I don't know if we'll have anything come up or not. There's no land development applications forthcoming soon, so.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Now that the capital improvements project will probably take a meeting just just on that, but we'll see how it goes.
Right.
Any other staff? Nancy?
Sorry, my dog is barking. Just would let you know, there have been some updates to Title 16 that have just recently been codified, so we will I will get you all a new updated Title 16, so as you're reviewing, you'll have the most updated copy.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, attorney's choice?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
All right. Okay, commissioner's choice? Carl?
The the comment about combining the 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 needs of the this this huge project with the DDA, that's that's gonna be kind of a chore there. There's gonna be a lot of conflict of interest between the two of them. It'll be interesting to see how that works out. We'll see how it goes. That's all I've got.
Okay, agreed. Colin?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Judy? Noel?
We'll look back at this meeting as the the start of a very long process, but I'm I'm looking forward to really diving in with with everyone on here.
This might be our shortest meeting for a while. We'll see. Diane?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Kate Townley?
I was just gonna say, I noticed there's a community meeting Thursday night for proposed development at 1070 West Hampton, which I think is what we looked at. Gosh, almost two years ago or two years ago. So I'm not in the that area to be notified of that meeting, but they have information for that on the city website.
Great, thank you. Meg?
Couldn't find you and turned off the video. Sorry, nothing for me. Thanks.
Nancy, who did I miss?
Yourself, I believe, and that's it.
Scrolling across the top of my screen, and I'm not, that's kind of kind of strange. I have nothing either except for I think we're all looking forward to get some really substantial work done, but we have a lot of work to do, so we're just gonna have to dig in and do the best we can. Okay. Any objection to adjourning the meeting? See none. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.